Coming back. We'll see how long we last this time. With everything that's going on.
Excuse me, did I take one minute? Thank you for the lines.
Yes.
Beautifully. Thank you so much.
Very welcome. Yep, we'll drop them all so that we can have a better viewing. Alright, so, we have two different videos that we're gonna look at today. Okay, Mary Beth, see me? Am I okay where I am here, Mary Beth? Okay. Now, I can see my little... Thank you. So, if you're not familiar, this whole series started with the very first video. I'm gonna show these in the way that he did the productions. So, the very first video we're gonna see is what they call the pilot. It wasn't designed as a pilot. Dallas Jenkins, who is the producer and one of the main writers, belongs to an evangelical church. His father is actually... His father wrote the Left Behind series. He's really with those books about the rapture and the end of the world. And I think there's like ten or twelve of them. It begins with Left Behind, and it's one where in the rapture, everybody just disappears. The planes fall out of the sky and cars hit telephone poles because people just get caught up in the rapture and they disappear. So, it's a little weird, to put it politely. And I... So, I had somebody that got me the series, and I I never got beyond the first one. It just was too hard for me to read. I said, "It's just not what we believe as Catholics." So, if you've read the series, you're a better man than I am, gun-ga-din. I couldn't get beyond... I couldn't even get to the end of the first one. It was that distracting. And anyway, his father, the writer of those series, is Dallas Jenkins's father. They belong to an evangelical church. And when he had this huge failure for a film that he had been producing, he turned and he did a short for his church for their Christmas service. So, it's a small vignette, really. It's not fifteen minutes. And it's simply called The Shepherds. There's very little dialogue in it. But what he does is he gives us a very different perspective to what happens at the birth of our Lord. So, we don't have a lot of dialogue to discuss. So, what we're gonna have to discuss is his theatrical interpretation of the birth of our Lord. So, when he did the original one and they showed it at his church, one of the leaders of Vid Angel, one of the owners or the producers of that company, belonged to the church, and they determined that that was really what they were looking for. They were looking for something that was biblically based as a Christian series that they could be able to make as part of their company. In order to be able to really be a springboard for Vid Angel to become a major picture company and a major... To be able to compete with Netflix and Starz and the others. So, they went to Dallas and his crew and approached him to be able to write a series. Using the technique that he had and his particular perspective to the scriptures and to our Lord and the Gospels, they asked him to be able to create a series. So, that's why they call it the pilot. It wasn't done as a pilot, it wasn't intended as a pilot. It was just a worship piece done probably four years ago. And from then, they began to be able to do the series that we're looking at. And of course, they've had great success. Now, they've fully funded up to the third season. They're gonna start that production, and it's due to be released in March or April of this coming year. So, that's coming out already. They've started that production. They're actually building a permanent set. So, they're looking long range. They're gonna use this set to be able to film the other five series that they're going to do. And then, of course, it will be a permanent setting. So, then they'll be able to make it a kind of a theme park. Because my guess, they won't probably have rides, but they're probably gonna make it some type of a theme park where you'll get admission and they'll do different things there or whatever. So, it's gonna be a permanent setting. They're building it in Texas, I believe. Because the second series, they filmed in Utah, and they ran into problems because when they filmed some of it, it was thirty degrees in Utah. So, they had a real problem. Dressing to be in Palestine, and they were pretty weather. So, it was a challenge. You see some of the behind-the-scenes stuffs. They've got winter coats and nittens and that stuff. Then they had to take them off for the filming. And then they had to warm their breasts so that when they were filming, you didn't see the cold air coming out of your mouth. So, it's an interesting challenge that they had to do. So, this particular series is about the shepherds. So, it's Luke's interpretation, as is the second one that we'll look at. Which is maybe just a question, did you all go to the theater to see it? Did you... I didn't go to the theater, but it is available online. So, I watched it online. So, have you all seen the Christmas one? You may not have seen this one either, The Shepherds.
It's on Catholic TV in Washington. It's been on every day from different times since before Christmas. And it's still being shown.
The Messengers?
Right.
Okay. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a look at The Shepherds. And so, it catches you because like the first episode, you don't really see Mary and Joseph until more than halfway through the episode. But you'll see them there. So, it opens in Bethlehem, and there's a lot of activity because of the census. So, people are coming and going, and there's a lot of discussion going on there. So, okay? Any questions before we run the video? And then we'll stop the video, and we'll have a little discussion. And then we'll show the second video and discuss that. Okay, you're gonna run that? Alright.
Because they zeroed in on it.
In the synagogue, you jumped on the floor. Yes, well, it's just another instance of how he is unclean. If you pick up through the story, you recognize that shepherds are not... They're not a good class of people in the first century. They're frowned upon, they're looked down upon, they're dirty, they're smelly. I mean, it kicks him out when he sees that the blood is there because the blood is... Blood is a sign that he's unclean. And so, any type of open wound... I mean, when we hear about the lepers, we think of it as leprosy, like an eczema or psoriasis on the skin. But actually, he would have been considered a leper. He would not have been allowed to interact with other people because he had an open wound on his skin. And you were not allowed to touch blood because that was the life source. Only God was able to be able to receive the blood. So, that he's bleeding on the floor makes it unclean. That's why you notice that he's very careful to clean that when he finally kicks him out. Because that's a concern. Of course, I think the point of the producer is that the... On one level, the human level, it's about the fact that he is unclean. He, who is this crippled shepherd, brings a lamb that is not spotless, though he claims it is, and it's unacceptable. But of course, it points then to the fact of the spotless lamb who is Christ. But what I think the imagery is, is that it's pointing us suddenly is to the blood of Christ that will save us. So, blood figures because it's ultimately the blood of... This blood makes him unclean and unworthy. The blood of Christ will be what brings about our salvation. And so, you realize that this particular shepherd is among the lowest of the lowest. Not only is he looked down upon by everybody else, but even his own shepherds don't like him. "No, you can eat over there. Your plate's already there. Sleep with the sheep tonight." So, you realize even among the outcasts, he's an outcast. So, he's among the poorest of the poor. And of course, the contrast to that is, if you notice the way he presents it. And part of what I do like is, you never see the angels. There's no... We have no idea what the angels look like. All we see is the light. And of course, as they come, because they are light, they extinguish any artificial light. They blow out the lights by their wingspan. I mean, it's a wonderful way to know, if you know the story, you know, "Oh, here they come." When the wind blows out, and of course, it catches their attention. "Why is the wind?" And then the wind picks up, and all of a sudden, you see the light as it is reflected into the shepherds. And you see their sense of wonder. We never hear what the angels say. We know what they say. And then the guy, they read over what the scripture passage is. But to me, the interesting thing is, Shimon, who's the shepherd, who's the crippled boy, he's not with them. He's not at their tent. He's off, he's been down washing his wound. His flame goes out. And then we see what he sees in the other shepherds. Which is a wonderful way to be able to make us the observer to this event. Because if we had been with the shepherds at that gathering, we'd have wanted to be looking up. Where because we're looking through Shimon's eyes, we're looking at the other shepherds, and we're wondering or imagining what they're seeing. But the interesting thing is to notice the way they do it is once the light vanishes, because the angels have left, they look at each other, and even Shimon, who is not part of their gathering, laughs. So, even though he wasn't with them, he knows the joy of the message. Whether that's that he could hear it, and they're not allowed to hear it, or he can see it in the expression on their faces, there's something there that touches his heart, even though he's not with the other three. And so, of course, what does he do? And the talking over that isn't in the original show. It's part of whoever this commentator is. About running for something that you desire. And of course, in the original, it's just music as he starts to run. But of course, because he's not with the others, he's closer to Bethlehem. He's also younger. And as he runs, you notice what happens. He's healed. He drops his crutch. He starts to run, and then when he gets there, the image for me is, again, it points to in John's Gospel, on Easter morning, when Mary Magdalene comes and says to the disciples, "They've taken the Lord from the tomb. We don't know where they have put him." What happens? Peter and John run to the tomb. And when John gets to the tomb, what does he do? He stops and he waits outside, and then Peter passes in and goes into the tomb. So, Shimon, who's the young shepherd boy, does actually what John will do at the end of the Gospel. He stops outside the stable, and he just looks as he hears the baby cry. And then the others push past him to go in. And then when he gets inside and he sees the baby, they tell them what... Because you realize Joseph is... I mean, he's a stranger. He's been... We have to remember this story. He's been given this place to stay. He's not in a normal place where people would lodge. All of a sudden, he's just had the birth of a child in his midst. He's trying to figure it all out. And then these strangers burst through the door. And Joseph, have you noticed, he stands up, and his first reaction is to protect his wife and the baby. "Wait a minute, who are you? What are you doing here? I have a permission to be here." You can almost hear the dialogue just by looking at his face. You see his concern, but also his resolve. "I belong here. I've got permission." "Who are you to barge in right now?" And then, we don't hear what they say, but you see their gesturing, and they're pointing to the sky. And then all of a sudden, he invites them to come forward. That they can come to be able to see. And then, they put their hands out, but Joseph hands the baby to Shimon. It tells you that he recognizes him from that day. He's the one who gave them the water. You realize that the couple, when he comes out of the synagogue, of course, in case she really didn't figure it out, you know, she touches her belly. Much like this. To show that she is... Am I still got you? Okay, Mary Beth, let's see. So that they have just arrived. And as Joseph says, they've not been able to have any water at that point. She's been without a long time for a drink. So, it connects, and that's really what we see. That's actually part of what they're gonna do in the series, is the way they set this up is characters intersect before they really know who each other is. And then later in Christ, they make the connection. And their lives become intertwined as they go along. Yep?
At the end, when they took Joseph, handed the shepherd a piece of cloth that came from Mary. They wrapped it around their bow.
Right.
What's the significance of that?
Well, I think he's binding our wounds again. I think it's the image of... I mean, you have to think about it. That's an incredible relic. I mean, here's the swaddling cloth of Christ. So, and the thing you have to remember is that what Luke uses the... The reference that they used in the translation was, "You will find the baby snugly wrapped in cloths." And we say wrapped in swaddling clothes. That's our particular translation. The reason for that is that Luke uses a word in Greek that he invents. It's not a common word. And so, but Luke also only uses it twice in his Gospel. In the story of what they wrap the baby in at its birth, and what they wrap the dead body in to bury it. So, the image is the two of them. In Luke's Gospel, it connects the beginning and the end with that sense of the cloth. So, again, I think it's that idea that Christ will bind our wounds. And this particular Protestant minister has made those connections to Christ and the prophecies. So, I think that it binds his wounds. And I'm sure that, I'm guessing, that if you have a cloth that wrapped the body of Christ, when he gets to the field, he doesn't have a wound at that point. But... So, and again, I think the other concern is that, I mean, here's the concern of Our Lady. I don't think they necessarily intended this beyond just the human dimension. But here's Our Lady, who has just given birth after having traveled all the way from Nazareth. And she's concerned about a shepherd boy who's bleeding in the stable. You know, there's the concern that it's not simply about her own need, but the needs of others as well.
And he also gave her water.
Right, right. So, she's giving back to him, right?
I just have a fun fact. I believe the shepherd plays Little James in The Chosen series.
Oh, okay.
He does, because, yes. And I think Dallas brings that up when they have an interview.
Okay.
That he used him in...
Well, and it's interesting because both of these these characters, these actors, excuse me, who played Joseph and Mary are, again, in this most recent Christmas special. So, they're the same figures playing Mary and Joseph at that point in their life.
And she's so beautiful.
Right.
And she's so sweet.
Well, and but in the adult ministry of Jesus, it's a different actor that plays the older Mary. Yeah, she has a very lovely face, though. Very youthful and innocent in the way that it's depicted. And I think the other thing, that part of the way they set this up is when Shimon goes into the synagogue, after he's trying to sell the sheep, and he's rebuked for that. He's in the synagogue, and of course, it's a wonderful way that they build or explain to us the expectation. The first century, they were expecting the Messiah. It was something that everybody talked about, including a shepherd. And they kind of look down on him because who is he? You know, and he's interested in the Bible, and he's studied this. He wants answers to his questions. And they don't want to be bothered. It's like, you don't have the right to ask that because you're just a poor, ignorant shepherd. But then they make the comment about, because he has tried to sell this less-than-perfect lamb, and now bleeds on the floor of the synagogue, the Pharisee says, "This is why the Messiah hasn't come, because of your sinfulness, your stains that are your sins. This is why the Messiah doesn't come." Which, of course, the contrast is, that's really to show you, they really don't have a clue. Because that's exactly the reason why the Messiah does come. It's not because they were perfect people. It's because they need what God can do. And in that sense, he did a nice contrast because he said, "The priests were concerned with a spotless lamb because they were concerned about the righteous sacrifice to God. But God is concerned about the righteousness of human beings." And so, his concern is to make that right. Where they're concerned with being perfect to God, God's concerned about making amends for us. Which is a nice way to contrast that. So, what they were expecting is not what they got. And that's why when it happens, they missed it. In other ways. Mary Beth, do you have anything you want to ask? Who's Kathleen's on? You're all set? Okay. I don't know who Kathleen is. We can't see her.
No, Kathy O'Leary.
Alright. She didn't send any notes?
No.
Alright. Okay, so we're good. We'll go to the Christmas special. The, of course, and it's the other interesting thing to realize how they carried the thread. So, what's the last thing Shimon says in the stable? We don't hear what the shepherds talk about with the angel. That's... The angel's vision is all left to our imagination. But at the end, Shimon says to Joseph, what does he say?
People must know.
"People must know." "People must know." Which is the thread that they pick up in the next piece that we're gonna see. It is, "People must know." Okay? Alright? Can we move? Alright.
Why is it that... So, Luke said that, "Why did you come here? It's not safe," right?
Yeah.
And she was hidden.
Nope.
Whoever took him, whoever took him, you know, to see Mary.
Yep.
So, can you explain why is it that Luke was okay where he was? And he said, "Mary, it's not safe for you to be here." So, I guess that's what I'm kind of not sure about that period of, you know, what was going on at that time.
Well, they were enemies of the state. They were hunted. There was a person on their head.
You mean the disciples?
The disciples. And Mary Magdalas says that when she's in Lazarus's house, when she says, "Tell me about our boys." Of course, the boys are the apostles.
Oh, okay.
And so, she says, "Tell me..." And so, she says, "Well, they're doing well, and the church is growing." And she says, "Let's talk about something else while you park me here." "No, no, 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 no," she says. "I pray for them every day. I need to know what I should be praying for." She says, "Pray for Andrew because they think he will be arrested soon." And she says, "They want us all dead," is what she says. So, and that's her concern, is that to realize they were enemies of the state. So, that's why the Roman soldiers, why she was hiding, and why he was traveling at night in the darkness, because it's a little easier to smuggle something at night than during the day. Wherever he had come from would give the excuse that he had journeyed a long way, whatever his papers showed, in order to be able to get to the house of Lazarus. Lazarus's house is in Bethany, which would be in around Jerusalem. So, to realize that the original disciples were in Jerusalem, and of course, Saul, the Pharisee, was killing them. So, I mean, the Acts of the Apostles tell us that... So, they literally ran for their lives. They left Jerusalem, they went to Damascus. And Saul's attitude was, "Well, you can run, you can't hide." He got papers from the Sanhedrin, and he headed to Damascus. With the understanding and with official documents, he could arrest them and bring them back to Jerusalem for trial so that they could be put to death. So, they left Jerusalem at that point, except for James. James, of course, is the first to murder because he stayed in the city of Jerusalem. So, that's what she shares, that he has died. And of course, Nathaniel has died, and Andrew will be next. So, Luke is... Luke is... He's a little bit less obvious because he's a Greek, he's not a Jew. So, he's collecting the information. In Rome, it's not obvious that he's necessarily a disciple. And so, when they get to the house of Lazarus, so this is part of the tradition that's beyond the Bible. So, he knocks on the door, and Lazarus comes to the door, and he says to him, "Traveler, are you lost?" And he says, "Not now. I have found the way." Okay, "the way" is actually the original description that the disciples used for the followers of Jesus. They didn't call themselves the church. They considered themselves the way. Because it was, "I am the way, the truth, and the life." So, they called the... Because the original Christians didn't see themselves as something separate from Jews. They believed that there was a way of living Judaism that believed in Christ as the Messiah. And then, if you notice, he takes his staff and he draws an arc in the sand. Okay, and then when Lazarus comes out, he does the same thing. Only it's in reverse. Okay? And so, that was the original code. Did you see all that in the film? Did you know what it means?
No, I didn't.
It's the sign of the fish, right?
Yeah, but that's what I thought, the fish.
It's a fish. So, why is the fish the symbol of Christianity? No, no, no. Again, the Greek word for fish is ikthos. Oops, sorry. Grab the wrong one. There it is. So... Right next, okay. So... Can they see that over there? Yeah. So, when he arrives, he makes this arc. Lazarus comes out, and he goes like this. Okay, so that's how it makes the fish. Alright? So...
That's the Greek word.
That's the Greek word for ikthos. The transliteration of that is this. Alright? So, the letters are...
Can't really see.
Theos.
Can't really see if I have it.
Is it hard to see?
I can't. It's right out there. They're gone.
Are there any up there? You know what, yeah, if you go in... Actually, Kathy, if you go to, in my office, on the bookcase behind my desk, there's a blue thing that has the Dry erase markers in it.
Okay. What are the letters in the fish, Father?
Those are the Greek letters of ikthos. These are the English transliterations.
Yeah, what are they? I, S, A?
I, it's I, Pi, Theta, Omega, Sigma. So, and so, the English translation is, the I is for the English J. Jesus Christus. So, it would be Jesus Christ, Theos, which is God, Us... I forgot the word for son. So, no. Soter, sorry. This is... Soter. Savior. This is living. Or it's, I think it's Soter, but not son. This is Theos. God. Christ. So the ikos, the letters in Greek stand as an acronym. So, in English, it would be, Jesus Christ, the Son of the Living God. Okay, so, Jesus Christ Christus, which is in the... And this is Sigma. No, that's a song. Sorry. I've gone back four times. It's been a lot of time since I did this. So, that was the original code because they were enemies of the state. And so how could you be able to know that somebody you met was legitimately a Christian? And that they would not turn you in? So that if you drew this line, alright, so you drew this line, and then the other person would draw this line, and they would know. And if they didn't, if you drew this line, and the other person didn't do anything, it looked like they were doodling and they would just make marks in the sand and then eventually step on it. So that if the other person, the other person would have to do this for them to know that they were Christian. And why was that the sign they used? Because the Greek word for fish stood for Jesus Christ, Son of the Living God. So the ikos is the original Christian symbol. And so to remember that even though they were Jews, that the Gospels, when Paul goes out, he goes all the way to Rome, they actually think he went all the way to Spain. And that's of course, the tradition that James wound up in Spain, which is where he was marked. And Our Lady appeared there to him while she was still living. That's the Our Lady of the Philharmonia, which of course, is the feast of October 12th, which is why Columbus sailed until that day, that's a different story.
So that's why the fish is on all the clothes?
That's why, that's why oftentimes you will see the fish as a very ancient Christian symbol. Because that was the first, that was when they were fugitives or when they were enemies of the state, that's how they could tell each other. One to another who they were and that they knew they were safe with each other. So Luke is Greek, he's not Jewish. So, and he writes for a Gentile community, probably in and around Rome. Because he's writing, and that's why, and then he writes the Acts of the Apostles while Paul is imprisoned. So that he can be able to tell his story. The question is whether he ever, did he ever finish the Acts of the Apostles? Was it intended to be undone, that the Acts of Apostles would go until the Lord returns, or was he too arrested and imprisoned and then executed? We don't know. That's lost in history. We don't know what Luke's intent was or wasn't. He didn't tell us, he didn't leave us that record. Okay? Some other things that they do a really nice job with and that's important to be able to tell. Again, it's the way they tell the story, but it has that biblical base. Okay, that wonderful interaction between Mary and Joseph as they're, she wants to get down and walk. You know, "I really think I can..." "No, you need to rest, you need to stay, that's okay." And she says to him, "We're far enough out of Nazareth, you don't need to hide my condition, people here won't know." So of course, that's the reference to the fact that there was conversation. That there was probably gossip about the fact that before they lived together, she was with child. And of course, the reference there is also from Matthew's version, not Luke's. That the angel, the messenger, appears to Joseph in a dream when he decides to divorce her quietly. And she refers to the fact, "Nobody would have blamed you if you had decided to divorce me publicly. You could have been able to still keep the money." She said, "It wasn't about the money." You know, and then they have that wonderful conversation about the plan of God and he says, you know, she says, "Well, you're a godly man, you're a good man. You know, you had a choice." And he says, "I don't really think I had a choice." And he says, "And even if I did have a choice, I know that I would have wanted to make the same choice that I did." And so does she. So that speaks to us on a human level of how they struggled with these very awkward situations. We tend to think, you know, the sentimentality of the beauty of Christmas. You know, we look at the creche and it's all so cute with the angels and the animals and all of that. And they do a wonderful job of realizing it's not very sanitary. You know, when you, they come in, "Well, I'll make the place..." And what does he do? The first thing he does is he takes the shovel and he moves the manure. And you think, "Oh, what a place for a baby to be born." And yet that's probably what it was. The hay might not have been, you know, in a nice neat clean bay. It would things that they would have walked on and stepped on and done other things. It's not, I mean, you think about a farm, they're not the most sanitary of places. And you know, and Joseph's trying to do his best. You know, he's not really prepared for any of this. And the awkwardness about when the baby's born, and she says, "I don't want you to see me like this." You know, and he's, "No, look at me, look at me." You know, and they do this together. And you know, and Joseph says wonderfully, "We are not alone. It's not just you and me." You know, "We are not alone, there are others here with us." So, and then of course, they do the wonderful nod to the first story. Because as the baby's about to be born, Joseph sees, we see an idea of what was going on in the field. Because beyond the hill, you see the aurora borealis in the sky, which is the angels appearing to the shepherds. And how they're gonna come. And then of course, at the end, when she takes out the swaddling clothes, she shows to Mary Magdalene that a piece has been torn because the shepherd boy had a wound and they gave it to him. So, they connect, even they connect their own story together. Not simply with the same actors, but even making the continuity of the way that they're telling the story, so that they actually dovetail together. Even though they were told that they were made in different, at different times, in different ways. So, and she says, "No one would blame you for divorcing me publicly, you wouldn't have to hide me in going to be able to register for the census." And she says, "Remember my mess, remember what the messenger said, 'Nothing is impossible for God.'" And Joseph says, "Yeah, my messenger didn't say that." It would've been nice if he had. So... This is what it hit till... And then, then of course, the real centerpiece to this is Our Lady's Song, "The Magnificat." That's actually why she's called Mary Magdalene to come, so that she can be able to dictate it. And of course, we know from the regular series of The Chosen, Mary has the unusual capacity to be able to read and write. So she asks her to come because she knows she can write down what she's got to tell her. Because she can be able to write because she's teaching one of the other disciples how to be able to read and to write as well. And that she can be able to trust her to be able to get it to Luke. And so, and then they really use that as the centerpiece. And Mary does the wonderful, when we read Our Lady's Magnificat on December 22nd, the first reading is what Mary Magdalene references. She said, "That's so beautiful, it's like the Song of Hannah, but even more beautiful." And so, and that's, we actually read them both that particular day. The first reading is the Song of Hannah, when she brings her son Samuel to Eli to present him to the Lord. And so, and Our Lady's Song is based on that. And in some ways, it's interesting the way they tell the story because a lot of scholars feel that the Magnificat was a separate tradition that Luke actually inserted as an addendum to his Gospel. Because it doesn't seem to follow the continuity. Of course, they make it work because it's Our Lady saying that she burst into these words that she felt were as much my own as they were from God. And then she says to Mary Magdalene, again, how they put all the pieces that Luke has in his Gospel, she says, "You know how I tend to, I treasured these things in my heart and it was very personal to me. And I didn't want to share it, but I realized that I need to share it. Because, why? Of course, people must know." And so that's the point, that people must know what God has done. And then of course, she gives her that wonderful and generous gift of the swaddling clothes that she kept from the birth. And then again, and again, they bring us back to the first story. Because she reminds us that the swaddling clothes, where the lambs will given to them by the innkeeper, because it's what they use to wrap the newborn lambs. So, who's the spotless lamb? Wrapped in the same cloths that the lambs would be as they were newborn. So there's the connection to the Lamb of God, to the spotless lamb, as to who Jesus truly is. And then of course, as I mentioned, he's wrapped in cloths again at the time of his burial. Okay? Alright, anything else? Those are what I have. Yes, Rosary?
It's not a question, but I love how we see Joseph and Mary in a relationship. And how he reaches over to her, he touches her, they come together, it's so beautiful.
They picked the perfect Joseph too. He has such a loving, kind face.
You don't see that, I don't see it when I read the Bible.
Well, yeah, 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 so that was nice. I agree with you. I agree with you.
I like the fact that what they show in all of this is, you know, they're sweating. It's not neat and, I mean, Joseph is sweating on this ride. You realize he's traveling through hot country. You almost want to say to him, "You know, take off some of those wool clothes." You know, "Take a break here." But he's walking in the sun, he's leading her, you know, and he's burnt, I mean, he's clearly, he's not Irish, by any stretch. Joseph isn't. And then even in the stable, they're both soaked with sweat from what they're going through. And of course, that wonderful line, "I don't know how you did it." And there's such a wonderful way that they really pick up on how we as men don't have a clue. You know, "Well, if you want to walk, walk." "No, no, you have to help me down, Joseph." "Oh, yeah, 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 I gotta do that, okay." You know? That's very human and you realize, he doesn't, he doesn't know, it's not his experience, it's awkward. And there's, in their tenderness, there's also an awkwardness because they are husband and wife, but they're not intimate in that. And you pick up both of that in the way that they present it. That they are a husband and wife and they have an intimacy, but it's not anything that's a sexual intimacy. So there's an awkwardness. "I don't want you to see me like this." You know, "Just look at me." You know, "We'll do this together, we'll do this, it's okay." So...
That was the children all about, having us do.
I like the idea that, well, she actually said she loved him.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a question. At the very end, when Mary gave the cloths to Mary Magdalene, was she, was she sick? Was she, were they planning to pass her assumption?
Not at that point, because she, because she is sick, she has a fever. So that's why you notice they did a wonderful juxtaposition. They're in the stable and Joseph reaches into the bucket of water and he starts to mop her brow. And then you see them doing the same thing with the older Mary in Lazarus's house. And then she says, Mary Magdalene says to her, "I miss him so, I think that you will see him before I go." And Our Lady's response is, "Not yet," she said, "There's a long time to go. This is just a fever, it is not the end." She says to her, she said, "This is not the end, there's a long time to go yet." Because of course, that's the other part of the tradition is that she, because she's in the house of Lazarus, eventually she will be taken by John and they'll take her to Ephesus. And that's supposedly where the assumption takes place. There are two traditions. The Greek Orthodox claim that they have the site in Jerusalem where Our Lady was assumed. But the Romans claim that they have it in Ephesus where she was assumed. And that's, what's her name? Emmerich. The visionary, what was her first name?
Anne, Anne.
Anne, Anne Emmerich. Who had the vision of the passion that Mel Gibson used for his movie. She's the one that found the house in Ephesus. She had the vision. Told them where to dig outside of Ephesus. Gave them the exact location and when they put the spade in the ground, they hit stones. And they uncovered the house that had been buried for 15, 1800 years. Catherine Anne Emmerich, Catherine Emmerich.
So who's the man that was taking care of Mary?
Lazarus, that's Lazarus who was risen from the dead.
But I thought Lazarus was the person that brought her.
No, Lazarus is the one whose house she's staying in.
So who was the person who brought her?
It's a disciple, it's some friend. Mary Magdalene makes some quick reference to who he is, but she only says, "He has friends." Because Our Lady says, "Well, how did you get here?" How would, she says, "So and so has friends and they provided me with safe passage, you needn't worry." And that's when she says, "Well, tell me about our boys." "Well, let's talk about something else." "No, no, no, I pray for them every day, I want to know what I need to pray for." So, but Lazarus, the one with the heavy dark beard, that's Lazarus. And so it's in their house, they were, so that's what tells you she's in Jerusalem at that point, because they live in Bethany. But I mean, you know, Bethany is just, I mean, if this were Jerusalem, Bethany is the other side of Bear Hill, literally. That's how close Bethany is. It's the other side of the Mount of Olives. So, it's that close. Alright?
In the movie, I had no idea, what's this guy in a costume carrying this stuff?
Well, because, and that's all part of what, they don't tell you because that's what engages you, just pay attention. Because you wonder, "Who is this? We were supposed to be..." We expect to see the stable and shepherds and Magi and, you know. I'm guessing that somehow they'll introduce Matthew and Magi for the next one. So... Any questions at home? Somebody was there, but they've gone off, we head forward. Okay. Okay. Alright then. So next week we pick up with, next week we'll pick up with season one. And it's actually, if you want to read the Gospel story, it's in Luke's Gospel, it's, I think, chapter four. It's the healing of the paralytic when they lower him through the roof. Okay, so that's next week. And then the week after is Nicodemus, which is John, chapter three. Alright? Thank you very much.